This conference will now be recorded.
I have Charles to...
He handled it well.
Do you know what time it is?
Okay, it's 5:30. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please.
Mr. Beeson?
Present.
Commissioner Stolman?
Here.
Commissioner Stover?
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Present.
Mayor Warren?
Here.
If anybody wants to stand for an opening prayer or pledge allegiance, please. Josh will give us the prayer.
Father, we thank you for bringing us together tonight safely. We are also very happy to see that it's going to warm up pretty soon. Father, we just ask that you be with these proceedings that we're going to have tonight. We just ask that you give each other a chance to speak clearly and be able to get along where we need to. And everybody will be able to speak clearly. Just ask that you also remember our first responders and all those that serve our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is there any additions, deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Warren, we would like to add, under the awards and proclamations, a proclamation to declare Arkansas City, Kansas, as a Purple Heart City. And then, under the consent agenda, we need to add reappointment of Jill Smith to the outstanding student award committee along with Jason Brewer.
May we approve the additions to the agenda?
It's been moved in second. Any more discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
We need approval of the agenda.
I can motion to approve the agenda as written.
As added.
As added.
Okay, yeah. For a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, awards and proclamations. Don't you guys come on in, legion?
I brought a couple of VAF guys with me.
Okay. What we're going to do first, I told you kind of wrong, we're going to go ahead and vote on this proclamation first, and then I'm going to read it to you. And then I'll send the copies to you, and then you can kind of give us kind of background while you're here and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to make, I want to make a motion to proclaim the city of Arkansas City as a Purple Heart City.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
The proclamation. Whereas the residents of Arkansas City have a great admiration and utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served their community and their country and community in armed forces. And whereas the veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award of decoration made available to common soldiers and is specially awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veterans, members, and families, promote patriotism, support legislative cities, and most likely make sure we will never forget. Now, therefore, I, Jay Warren, Mayor of Arkansas City, do proclaim the city of Arkansas City as a Purple Heart City and encourage the citizens of Arkansas City to show their appreciation for their sacrifice, our Purple Heart recipients, and have made in defending our freedoms, knowledge, their courage, and to show them the honor and support they all have earned.
Hello, my name is Terry Justice, a longtime resident of Arkansas City. I am a combat veteran and a Purple Heart recipient twice, three times. I'm also a researcher and a writer. It's been my privilege to look into the cemeteries of Cali County. And in my work, I have uncovered some extraordinary people. And amongst those people are recipients of seven and five Purple Hearts. These are all who are from World War I to the present day. And those names we find on the walls here in the hallway, each gave everything they had for this country as well as ours. And each one of them received a Purple Heart in that cost. So I would emphasize that, as a recipient, I feel obligated to speak for those that cannot speak now. And it's quite a privilege. In the time that I have done my work, I have found, as I have said, some extraordinary people and continue to do so. And at one point, all this will be published. Thank you.
Good job, Terry.
Good afternoon. My name is Randy Frank. I'm the Department of Kansas American Legion Commander for the State of Kansas. So an Army field artilleryman. It's very obvious that Arkansas City loves and supports their veterans. As you can drive around and see that you have two bridges named after soldiers who have fallen. You have Blue Star Bridges. You also have a Blue Star Park on the north end, excuse me, the south end of town on your way out. I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor Warren, city council members, the citizens of Arkansas City, the veterans of foreign war post 1254 here in Arkansas City, American Legion post 18 in Arkansas City, and all the veterans who have served our country. What does it mean for a city to be recognized as a Purple Heart City? When the city of Arkansas City is recognized, and it is now, we are remembering and honoring Purple Heart recipients, both living and dead. We are honoring all veterans living in the city that have served in the military. We are taking a moment to honor George Washington with his significant contributions to our country. And we're using this moment to educate all city citizens of the sacrifice of your veterans and to remind you to thank them for their service. Just one last thing. I feel it's very fitting for all those who have been to combat and returned. I have as well. The verse states, "A greater love hath no man than this than man lay down his life for his friends." Again, we'd like to thank you and the entire city for your dedication and those who serve their country. Thank you.
I want to say this is a great honor for us to be able to do that for you guys and stuff. You sacrificed your life, you know, and it's a really meaningful thing for us. Randy, you might talk about that signage that we're going to be doing down the road.
Yeah, so we'll be working with the local groups here and looking, doing some signage on the entrances of the towns proclaiming that we're a Purple Heart City. We'll also be working with them to, when the weather's a little warmer than it is right now, to do some type of recognition ceremony on this as well, so we can get to kind of get the public involved and do something nice for that. So we'll have a few things to do in the next few months to kind of continue this celebration and kind of keep the ball rolling.
Now, we're the first Purple Heart City in Cali County, is that right?
That is true. I chose Arkansas City because I was born and raised here. The South Summer Bridge is named after my son, Kevin Gilbertson. My family is here. My brother manages your water plant. Tells me it's good water. I hope it is.
We got the best water in Kansas.
If I could find a house that doesn't have a barking dog behind it, I'm going to buy it and move here. But we are looking for a house to move here, and we're going to retire here.
Yeah. Well, thank you guys for your service.
Right.
Thank you.
Next on the list is recognition of visitors and staff. And we're going to recognize one student as overall DARE essay winner as selected by the city of Arkansas City body, our governing body, so. If you want us to come up.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As Mayor Warren said, tonight, we're going to take a few minutes and recognize our DARE essay winners. And we thank you for participating in choosing the overall winner. I'd like to introduce those that wrote an essay if they're here tonight and our school resource officers, Officer Lyons and Officer Rutt. And this past fall, we did have one dignitary that taught their class. Our retired chief of law taught some of their classes at Roosevelt.
Jefferson.
Jefferson, I'm sorry. So we selected, I should say, they selected seven students from each class that they taught. And part of their instructions on writing their essay after attending classes was to write an essay that consisted of three main parts. What they learned in DARE, how they have used DARE decision-making model, and how they plan to use what they have learned to make safe and responsible choices. So that was their instructions. And if the students are here, I'll have them come up. We have Amber Crowe. She here or not? Jacobi Hammer, Floyd Kirk, Ciara Smith, Brenda Ortega-Ortega, Hayley Shu, and Aubrey Stevens. And these were our winners from their class in each school, so give them a round. And out of these essay writers, the commission chose the overall winner. So we'll let one of the SRO officers take it from here. Okay, so out of all of our winners from these schools that we taught there in throughout the fall semester, our overall winner out of all these Sure. Actually, he's got a topic right there, okay. As everybody can see, each winner received a certificate from them as well that is signed by Officer Lyons and myself along with the interim chief of law and Mayor Jay Warren. There you go, Aubrey.
I might want to add that we were the ones that went through all those essays and stuff, and every one of you guys are winners. And it was hard to figure out who was number one, but I'm just saying that y'all are winners, so thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
It's come up, James.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Amber, come up here and...
Congratulations.
Sir. Good job. I know you. Good job.
Okay, we'll get back to the agenda, item four, the consent agenda.
May we approve the consent agenda as amended?
Second. It's been moved in second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. New business?
Number one, understanding management permit is a resolution of the governing body of the secular Kansas City, Kansas, meaning advisable to annex man not adjoining the city as herein described and requesting the board of Cali County Commissioners make a determination that annexed, that the annexation of such land will hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that any other incorporated city located within Cali County, Kansas pursuant of these provisions of KSA 12-520.
Well, that title pretty much explains everything. But Etzenoa has requested a property that they own where they want to build their cultural immersion center at 2837981st Road to be annexed into the city. Because this is not adjoining the city, we have to have the county commission review it. And they make a determination based on what that title was, whether or not it should be annexed. That's what this resolution's for. I didn't provide a map in the packet, but I did provide you one this evening, so you at least know where we're talking.
Sandy, you want to come and say a few words about, or what you're trying to do?
Let me, okay. Josh, what happens if the county denies this? We have other ways to go about doing it?
I think the only option would be to try to appeal it, but...
Okay. I can't see any reason why they would, but you, you know. You never know. I don't know, it's about 2015 or so they've made some revisions to the annexation statutes, and this is one of the things. If it was not a continuous piece of property with existing city, and yet they call it a high man exation, permission from the county.
Okay.
I think it probably stems from when you get in the metropolitan areas and Johnson County and stuff, there was, you got all those land grabs going on.
Right.
Another layer of oversight on that, so if one city's not hampering another city's growth.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. We are seeking to build a cultural immersion center on 81st Road, which is to the south, I mean, sorry, the north of 166, a little bit to the east of the current country club. The nearest annexed property is Country Club Estates, which is actually across the highway and to the east. We're seeking the annexation because we feel like it gives us the best opportunity to acquire UNESCO World Heritage Site. We will be hooking on to water and sewer facilities. We understand that that will be at our expense. We do understand that we do not have to be annexed in order to have gone to those services, but we feel like that provides us with the best opportunity moving forward. And also, the city has been a partner in this project since 2015 when it started. So I'd be happy to address any questions or concerns. We do own the property. We have started clearing the property. We hope to start bringing in dirt next month and actually have a groundbreaking in June with an opening date in 2026. So that is the plan at this point.
I have two questions. One, how much is this, how big of a building are you wanting to bring on here?
So the original plan, which what we're still going with, is about 15,000 square feet. It would basically bump up to the canyon wall and then go onto the east. It would provide trails and simulation dig site. And so we have about 80 acres to play with there. We own 10, and we have a 100-year lease on the other 70.
And with this, with this building that they're wanting to put in, and I'm sure most people here know this, I just wanted to get it out there, you know, kind of a nice PR thing is is they're estimating how many people are going to come visit, start visiting Arkansas City because of this, this building and that.
In the past, just doing tours, which are just a two-hour interval, we brought approximately about 8,000 people to town per year steadily. We would assume with the center, based on the statistics that we've been provided by the state, would be about 25,000 a year. And then with UNESCO World Heritage Site, that would jump up to about 200,000 a year. So there's obviously a lot of planning for UNESCO World Heritage Site. You have to have restaurants and gas and hotels and all of that to accommodate that. The application for the UNESCO site doesn't go in until 2030. So we would have to have the building in place and then show at least a plan for how we might do that before we send in the application. And we are within a 50-mile radius of the site location is where those services have to be.
You might talk about how the state of Kansas is behind us.
Yeah, the state of Kansas provided us with the Sprint Grant. They are considering us a final destination for Kansas, which right now Kansas does not have one. It would be the end destination for people to come to versus passing through the state to go elsewhere. So they did provide us with a half a million dollars. They're also providing us with services through the state for tourism and marketing to help us build that and grow that prior to the application in 2030. Depending on the governor's race and, you know, how all that turns out, they did commit to helping the year before the UNESCO project goes in, in 2029, to help us with a third party that would help us write that and put that together based upon the work we do between now and then. That's sort of a promise if the same people are in office, so. But it will be a great thing for Arkansas City.
How much have you raised so far?
We've raised $5 million of a $7 million project.
So UNESCO does every 10 years? Is that, is that how they operate?
Right, so the way it works is you submit an application every 10 years. It goes to the federal government, who creates what's called a list. And you are inscribed to the list, which means then the federal government is able to make recommendations to UNESCO that's housed out of France as to who they want put on that particular list. So it's sort of a multi-stage process. We have been engaged with them for about three years now. We meet with them on a regular basis. We listen to the hearings and whatnot that go on for other people that are trying to get that done that are a little bit further down the road than we are, so that maybe we can have the best shot at not making the same mistakes, if you will.
Explain, Sandy, about how big this thing is. I mean, the sense of the Indians and stuff that, you know, that there might be one of the biggest settlements in North America. You might talk about that just for a second.
So if you're familiar with the Etzenoa story, the Etzenoa story revolves around conquistadors that made a visit here in 1601. And at the time they were here in 1601, the documented where they had boots on the ground for the conquistadors is a five-mile stretch on both sides of the Walnut River. That qualifies us as the second-largest Native American site in the U.S. and Canada. Since then, with all of the research and drone flying and all the things we're trying to do, we have determined that the town continued on to that point. And the firsthand accounts of when the conquistadors were here indicate that they never reached the end of the settlement. So we know the settlement will be extended to the north along the Walnut River, towards Winfield, and may be passed. But we don't have the data from the drone yet to actually map that out. So what that tells you is there really weren't settlements this large in that time period. And so we are a little bit shy of what Cahokia Mounds is as the largest. Now, the largest doesn't necessarily get you anything except a title, but what it tells you is that we have a great opportunity to become a UNESCO site simply because sites of this magnitude were not found.
Also, you mentioned that this was probably a trading center for other groups?
Right, so as the research has come along through Wichita State, and we've, you know, gotten records from Spain and all kinds of things, what we've determined is that at some point after the time the conquistadors were here in 1601, that this area became sort of a trading mecca for the plains. And we see evidence of that in things that end up in other places that actually came from here. And I could give you all the detail on how we calculate all of that out, but it has to do with carbon dating and a lot of things. But what we know is they were here from 1450 to 1750, so that's 300 years longer than we've been a country. We also know that Etzenoa was, is the only Native American settlement that has a firsthand account. If you're familiar with Cahokia, they use their artifacts to tell the story. We use this artifacts to prove the story. So that makes us unique in a different way.
And the big thing is the battle they had here with the Spaniards, you know?
Yeah, they had a battle here with an enemy tribe that lived on the other side of the Arkansas River in present-day Oklahoma. That is something the National Battlefield Trust is interested in. It's the first stand-up battle in North America. And basically, what their terminology means is the Spaniards were using weaponry and the natives were using only hand, hand weapons. So there's a lot to it, and if anyone wants more information, you know, I could talk to y'all there.
The tribe that was here in the settlement...
The tribe that was here in in the settlement, do they exist anymore?
Do they what?
Exist?
They do.
Okay.
They live in Ananarko on the reservation. They are about three thousand members. We do have Zoom calls with them and communicate with them. So yes, they very much do exist. They went down to about two hundred and seventy two in the eight late eighteen hundreds, but now they're back up to about three thousand.
Are they excited about this?
Well, I'd say yes and no. You know, there are always some complications just given, you know, how history is told and and that kind of thing. But yeah, I mean, it's a great thing for them too, because it, they don't have a lot of information on their history from the time period of Etsanoa. So all of these writings and things that we're pulling out from Spain help tell that story. Anything else I could answer for?
This time I move that we adopt a resolution of the governing body of Arkansas City, Kansas deeming it advisable to annex land not adjoining the city as herein described and requested by the Board of Cali County Commissioners to make a determination that the annexation of such land will not hinder or prevent the proper growth or development of area or that of any other incorporated city located within Cali County pursuant to the provisions of KSA twelve five twenty C.
Hey, it's been moved second. Any discussion? I have one thing. Will you be going up there when they have it on their agenda to talk about it?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? If not, all favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Sandy.
I I will let you know that I have had preliminary discussions with the county, and I don't foresee that it'll be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Number two.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an independent contractor service agreement, item number two, with E. Rodney Iverson, Jr. from the municipal court, municipal court judge services.
This extends their contract a year and then provides for a five percent increase in their. And the the next, the the next items for the, I mentioned too, that they go every other month, so they're part time.
They split their salary. Can we put those two motions, the resolutions together, or do we have to do them separately?
I would do them separately because they are separate contracts.
Okay. I'll make a motion, resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter an independent contract service agreement, item number two, with E. Rodney Iverson, Jr. for municipal court judges services, I'm sorry. Second. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three.
A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter to in turn into an independent contractor service agreement, item number two, with E. Rodney Iverson from municipal court judge.
I make a motion, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter independent contract service agreement, item number two, with E. Rodney Iverson Municipal Court Services.
Second. Hey, it's been moved second. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four.
A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a professional services agreement, item number one, with H. Kristen Munson for city prosecutor services and municipal.
Yeah, this is just sustaining her services and five percent increase in compensation.
She hadn't had any con.
She hasn't, she's this, she had any compensation. Well, she does a tremendous job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into professional service agreement, item with number one, number one with H. Kristen Munson for city prosecutor services and municipal court.
Second. Hey, it's been moved second. Any other discussion on it? If not, all of, excuse me, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number five.
Consider the first reading of an ordinance adopting a budgeted pay plan to become effective January twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
That would be me. Hi, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we spoke Friday at the work session about some organizational movement regarding the nuisance inspector that is currently in City Manager Department, Neighborhood Services Division, moving that position to the police department and changing the job title to animal control officer, because that is primarily what that individual would be doing. In addition to that, in looking at the public service officer position at the police department, we determined that that position, the job description that was written for that is does not really meet what the employee is currently doing. It had court duties, it had evidence duties and animal control duties. So speaking with Inter Chief Holloway, we decided to remove the animal control and remove the court duties and just make it an evidence clerk, because that is truly what it is. And that position will stay in the police department. There are no changes in compensation. And then the next thing is adding a firefighter, A, EMT., which is Advanced Emergency Medical Technician, part time position to the pay ordinance, because just recently, few months ago, we had a few employees at the fire department continue their education and certify as advanced EMTs. And so one of them had an opportunity for wonderful positions in Texas, and she's going to be coming back and and we're keeping her on as part time, so we need to add the position on the pay ordinance. Do you have any questions? Just a movement, job title changes, and we will be updating the job descriptions to specifically match those two positions that are going to be at the police department with the job title changes.
With that being said, I don't really have any questions.
No.
Okay, I make a motion, we consider the first reading of the ordinance adopting the budget plan or pay plan to become effective January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four, and it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Out of a sort of discussion by city commissioners, we have anything we don't talk about?
I don't have anything this time.
Okay, comments for the honest, for items not on agenda, do we anybody?
Do you have anything, Sandy?
Okay. Uh, city manager updates?
Okay. I want to remind you guys that we have Local Government Day coming up on January twenty fourth, so if any of you would like to attend, just let me know, if you signed up for that. Also, I wanted to set up specifically for the new folks, but all of the commissioners will be invited. Department facility visits on January thirtieth. All those go around like a facilities and visit with department heads, and we can, we can discuss some of the, you know, the challenges and some of the good things that are happening in each department, and that'll help you when you come to these meetings to have some background on what's going on out there and and, you know, conditions of the facilities, equipment, and and just really kind of the good and the bad and the ugly of what's happening within our organization. The Chamber banquet is on February third, and the city has reserved a table of eight, so if any of you would like to attend that, let me know, and we'll get you set up for that. And then on February ninth, it's a Friday, we'd like to do kind of a special work session for strategic planning. We can kind of review the strategic work plan that the previous commission gave us and kind of where we're at on that, and then then give you guys the opportunity to to give us some direction and and chart kind of chart the course for the city over the next several years and what the what stat needs to be focused on. So we'll do that on February ninth. On March second, the Hospital Foundation banquet, and again, the city has a table of eight, so if you would like to attend the found, the Hospital Foundation banquet, let me know, and we'll get you, get your seat there.
But on February ninth, what date is that?
Friday.
Friday.
Work session, right? Yeah, it's, it's, we're just going to make it like, instead of an hour, it'll probably be a little longer.
Yeah, and it's a non-normal work session day, so it'd be kind of an in-between week, so it's a little extra, extra. Maybe we'll get some little extra nights for lunch that day, I don't know.
Yeah.
Then on April the second and thirteenth is the League of Municipalities Leaders Academy, and that's a two day training event in Manhattan. And so it's it's really good for for all elected officials and specifically new ones, kind of gets you a little deeper into the weeds on open meetings, open records, and and just kind of how, you know, things work and and your responsibility and those types of things. So if you're interested in that, let me know, we'll get signed up for that. Again, that'll be an overnight, or it'd be a Friday and a Saturday, and that'll be a pretty busy weekend around that. And then today, City Manager Winfield and I met with the Cali County Humane Society. They're having some capital improvement issues out there, some some deferred maintenance over the years, and we've been working with them for a while now to to kind of figure out what's going on, what they need, and get some bidding and pricing. There's three, three, three things that we need to kind of focus on first. The epoxy flooring out there is is peeling, and they're getting written up quite a bit from the inspections of the state. So that's not, we need to take a look at. They have a bid, several bids on that, and approximately six thousand dollars to address the needs of that, of that. It wouldn't be completely reoxising the floor, but fixing areas that are bad.
Question. Thinker, just got rid of that, made it a concrete floor, it's just dogs and cats, right?
Yeah, but there's, there's hygiene cleanup. There, it's, it's pretty regulated is how it's maintained and and sanitation and things of that nature, yeah.
Okay.
Plumbing, there's issues with the plumbing out there, a lot of old copper pipe that's kind of pitting and leaking and and some drains and things like that that need to be addressed. And then the other, the other big one out there right now is is the drainage, outside drainage. When they wash pens and stuff out, there's a, there's a drainage system around the outside of the perimeter of the building, and it's clogged up and it's not draining properly. And so you've got all that standing animal waste and stuff, so that's, that needs to be addressed. So basically, those three items with the bids that they received to take care of it, we're looking at about twenty eight thousand dollars total cost. And if we split that between the two cities, we're looking at about fourteen thousand each. So I'll bring back at the next meeting, I'll have more details on the on the bids and kind of what we're looking, needing to do. Just as a reminder, the two cities own the building. We do, we do provide extra money each year for capital, capital improvements for the building besides some of the operational money we provide. I'll say probably for a number of years now, hasn't been managed well, and those funds haven't been used, you know, probably as optimal as they should have been, and some things have gotten behind. So I think the management out there right now is doing a really good job. It appears finances are kind of are turning around here the last several months, and and you you walk in and there's a definite difference in hygiene and the cleanliness of the facility. So I think they're on the right track.
How often will they give you financial reports of what you're doing?
Yeah, so we we get those every month. They do send that out every month and and.
Who wants the director?
There is a a board.
Okay.
Wants themselves. Again, the, it's kind of a three-way partnership. You've got the two cities that we own the building, and then we have, we have seats on the board to attend those meetings, and then there are, the the Humane Society is, has its kind of a separate entity, and they're the ones that have the board and hire and operate the facility itself.
Who's the people from Arc City on the board?
Chris from upstairs is, and.
Watts.
Yeah, Watts. And then the rest of, and then Taggart and I take turns attending. They do have the meetings. They have been meeting in each city back and forth. They'll have, they'll meet here one month and Winfield one month, so so we we do attend those when we can and. So, yeah, it, again, there, that, there will be some additional funds needed in the future. Those are the items that need to be taken care of right now, just to kind of keep in check with the inspections.
And is KDHT inspection on?
No, it's, it's Department of Agriculture. They have a division that does animal shelters and those types of things, so.
Any possibility of getting the county involved in this too?
I don't think so. We we've talked to them a little bit about that. You know, the, the, so what we pay for as cities is is the animal control piece of it. Whenever we pick up animals at large, we need to have a place to deal with them. Years ago, when that was built, our city closed down the one we had. And I think Winfield still has a holding facility that they can use as backup if they want to take their animals out there too, so. So it really kind of, you know, that's where we put our funding in and is to, you know, that piece of it. And I think that if I recall, they told us about sixty five percent of the population that comes through there is is from animal control activities, so.
Wonderful, yeah. I just know our, our street department is pretty good at doing drains and man drainage and stuff.
Yeah.
But but pulling it all out there in the man hours probably won't be cheaper.
Yeah, Taggart and I talked about that. We want to type some of that stuff that we, those are things that we do as.
Right.
And and we talked about that, but we thought probably in this case it might be better to let the contractor handle that and not.
And everything else.
Anything else, or?
And then I wanted to mention on the financials in the in the packet, they're kind of the year to date, December thirty first. But just remember, there's a few after, even after the end of December, we have a little bit of business from just going on, so this, this will change a little bit. It's pretty close, but it's, it is, there will be a few, a few changes to that report. And then also, with you new, new commissioners, you know, this report just kind of gives the kind of the, the big in and out numbers and kind of where we're at with our budget percentage wise and stuff. But if you would like more detail on finances, our city's website on the finance division page has check registers and all kinds of stuff, so there's a lot of good detail if you want to get in, you know, take that, just really, you know, see what what's going on financially, that that finance division page on the website, so.
And it seems like these higher interest rates with our money market stuff are making a lot more on our.
Yeah.
Money that we've got held in.
You know, it's interesting, we, we had a, a CD come up for renewal, and we actually, they, they put us, had us put that money into that, oh, the same program we have our, our checking account in, the sweep account, that was actually paying more money than the CDs. So we, when we took that money out of the CD, put it in the sweep account, it's earning more interest at the point that that doesn't, isn't the case anymore, we'll, we'll take it out of that and put it back into a CD. But that was kind of interesting that those, that was actually bringing in more interest than.
And our sales tax has been holding pretty strong, yeah, didn't it?
I just want to make a comment for those of you who are going up to that legislative meeting. Talk to our legislators about turning loose of the sin tax to help with property tax. That, it was, it was a sin tax back in nineteen thirty when they did it.
And there's supposed to be several billion dollars in that fund that they refused to
turn loose of that would help all of Kansas, not just us.
Yeah, they, Mayor Warren and I were talking a little bit earlier, there's, there was a hearing recently on, on, so there is a, there is a fund in place to help reduce, reduce property tax that the state hasn't funded since early two thousands. It's on the books still, they just haven't funded it. And so there was a hearing the other day to try to get that fund in, but I don't know the exact number, but it would probably equal about two mils if we were to have that funding back in place that that would, with the whole idea of reducing burden on property tax and transferring some of those state dollars back.
Two mils left.
Yeah.
So that that would be something that we definitely, will definitely want to visit with our, our legislators about, and it seemed to be kind of a, in the Republican leadership, kind of a push against refunding that like they used to, but look, we can always, we can always.
Swing left.
Oh, is there anything else anybody wants to say or do?
A move we adjourned.
I was thinking that. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.